Moment of silence for all the victims of the coronavirus pandemic, their loved ones, and those on the front lines of helping others and saving lives. Thank you. It's affirming and inspirational to observe the daily and countless examples of the very best of humanity at this time of unprecedented challenge and grief. Students, faculty, and staff have come together and continue to go to great lengths to help others every day. This includes volunteers who are staffing our food pantries, distributing laptops to our students, finding and even making personal protective equipment for those on the front lines of helping the sick and suffering. Faculty and staff who are reaching out to students for support at all hours of the day, and I see evidence of this, sometimes late into the night, and so many other generous and selfless acts and kindnesses. We're trying to bring visibility to this great work, both to thank our many heroes in this community and also to offer inspiration to all because it truly is inspirational. And I just want to say I'm so proud of our HCCC community and honored to be entrusted to lead and serve our great college. I wish so much that I could see you and be with you. But I'd like to provide several updates as circumstances continue to develop and change daily. You might have heard me talk about some of these updates at Tuesday's Board of Trustees meeting, which interestingly, we use the same format as this. And while there were no public comments, Hardick tells me that there were like up to sixty public participants, which was, which is just great. And I, by the way, I do want to thank Hardick, who's, who managed that and who's on, on the phone, on the line right now managing this meeting. Hardick, you are a true superstar, I told him after the board meeting. You might also, the comments that follow you might have heard if you listened to my video message to the community yesterday, but I wanted to take this opportunity to share some information with those who might not be aware. And moreover, I think we're all learning that with the daily news and happenings, it's helpful to have important information repeated and reinforced periodically. It certainly is for me. Late last week, the United States Department of Education announced that specific funding that's been allocated to every post-secondary institution in the nation through the CARES Act recently passed by Congress and signed into law. HCCC will receive eight point four six seven million dollars in stimulus funding, half of which will be entrusted to us to support students in areas of need, and the other half directed to institutional operating support to help cover expenses and lost revenues associated with the pandemic. The U.S. Department of Education's format for awarding this institutional funding to us is weighted heavily by the proportion of students who are eligible for federal Pell Funding Support. So we actually have received, I think, the largest allocation of the eighteen community colleges in New Jersey because we have such a large concentration of students who qualify for Pell. So the half of our CARES Act funding that is focused on student support, a total of four point two million dollars, will be available imminently. I want to thank our valued colleagues, Vice President Lisa Dockerty and Associate Dean Sylvia Mendoza, for leading the development of guidelines for the distribution of these funds, consistent with the very flexible parameters provided by the U.S. Department of Education. And informing this work are best practices provided by New Jersey's Office of the Secretary of Higher Education and the Hope Center at Temple University, as well as others. We are just finishing our guidelines, but I can tell you, we expect funding to be provided to students for things such as food needs, housing needs, course materials, assistance with technology, healthcare, childcare, and other areas of need. All students will be eligible and encouraged to apply regardless of their financial aid status. They'll apply by using a simple e-form on the HCCC public website and internal portal. And requests will be very simple, and awards will be made expeditiously in the form of direct deposit or checks issued directly to our students. This funding will be available for distribution to students for as long as it lasts and for up to one calendar year. And shortly, we'll be making students aware of the opportunity and process for requesting this funding support. One of the really interesting sort of challenge, challenges and opportunities we are navigating throughout this pandemic is that in order to be responsive to students and others while in this crisis mode, best practices are suggesting that we try to, to the fullest extent possible, depart from the way we normally do things. So in the case of distributing the funding, we were asked to not think of this as we would normally distribute financial aid, which requires lots of paperwork and lots of due diligence and evidence collecting. The problem with that is it doesn't get funding into the hands of people who really most need it, and it takes too much time. Time is the enemy. In order to serve students, we have to be able to not only respond with flexibility, but respond with urgency, or it becomes a moot point. So this has been a theme in all of our work as we try to help students navigate these challenges. Not only are we having to do things outside of our comfort zone, things that aren't normally our processes, but we're having to do them with urgency. And I want to say, in spite of the very real challenge inherent in all of that, I am just so inspired by how everyone has come together to make it work. And I'll cite a few more examples. So the half of our CARES Act funding, four point two million for students, is, will be available virtually, you know, within a day or two, I think. I mean, it's almost here now. The second half will, that will be used to support institutional operations will arrive later, but we're told not much later. We're told we should be able to have that funding also very soon, so we will keep everyone informed. Thanks to everyone's efforts, our community's been working tirelessly to support our students and ensure that their studies can continue uninterrupted in spite of the challenges of required migration to fully online instruction and the remote delivery of services. Fully online instruction will continue through at least the first summer session, which concludes on July 1st. That's just the result of external circumstances beyond our control. We're trying to strike a balance in terms of future decisions about online instruction, a balance between waiting until we absolutely have no choice, but at the same time, being able to provide enough time to faculty and students to migrate if they need to. So we're being asked about summer two and fall. We're holding off as long as possible, but when we, if and when we need to make a decision to continue fully online instruction, we will be very visible about that. But at this point, we've gone to July 1st. I want to thank so many of you who contributed to the development of a pass/fail grading option for students who are understandably anxious about online learning. This is another example of something really important to the goal of students having uninterrupted academic progress that required swiftness, and that was also completely different from how we normally do things, but we came together and did it. Given the timing issues, I want to thank our professional associations, our all-college council, faculty and staff who worked collaboratively and with a sense of urgency to develop our interim policy and guidelines for pass/fail in support of our students. With the exception of major specific courses and a few programs in which accreditation and/or transfer requirements preclude the pass/fail option, such as nursing, students may opt for either a pass/fail grade or a letter grade for each of their courses, and they may make this choice as late as the end of the spring semester in consultation with faculty and staff. This is all about providing maximum flexibility to students and limited red tape, limited bureaucracy, and doing it with a sense of urgency. And we've all come together to make that possible. I can't tell you how many students have contacted me and shared how vitally important this is to them and how appreciative they are. So we've now, in addition to making that option available for the spring semester, we have now extended that through summer one since we have made the announcement and decision to continue fully online instruction through summer one. And I also want to share that our four-year college and university partners throughout New Jersey are, are almost unanimously supportive of this and are pledging their full support to accept transfer pass/fail credit in view of the circumstances. So again, they're recognizing this is not business as usual. It's about helping students and recognizing that we need to think outside the box and keep our focus on how to support our students. We, we further redirected some one-time cost savings from canceled spring events and services into our Hudson Helps program. This has provided immediate funding support to address a range of student needs, including the purchase of six hundred and fifty laptops that have been and continue to be loaned to students. We've kept our food pantries fully stocked and open through voluntary staffing, and I thank those of you so much who have stepped up and helped make this possible. I'm also delighted to share, if you have not heard this yet, that on Tuesday evening, our Board of Trustees approved a zero increase tuition and fee policy for the 2020-2021 academic year. There will be no increase in tuition and fees next year. So this means that for the summer, fall, following spring, following summer one of 2021, tuition and fees will be exactly what they are today. I thank the trustees for making this decision that's so important and helpful to our students. In spite of many challenges, we're delighted that student attendance and participation in fully online courses is strong. Now, we recognize there are lots of challenges, there have been many wrinkles. This is to be expected, or, you know, given the fact that we had no, no time to plan for this, and so many folks are, are having to navigate with no experience with online learning, both teaching and, and learning, and yet participation's strong. Our pledge and our goal is that as every single concern is encountered, we want to respond directly and with a sense of urgency to getting it corrected. And we've been doing that with everybody's cooperation. So this is really, the strong participation in online learning in spite of all of the obstacles is truly a tribute to the heroic work on the, on the part of our faculty and staff who've been supporting our students in so many ways. And in addition, and I know you all know this, but man, it's a tribute to the dedication, flexibility, and frankly, the inspirational grit and determination of our students who are balancing, who always balance a lot of challenges, but now more than ever. I want to, at this point, offer a special shout-out to Patricia Clay and all members of her IT team, and to Arjunendran Dhandari and her colleagues in the Center for Online Learning. Their leadership and support have been instrumental to our ability to navigate the many challenges of moving swiftly to online instruction and the remote delivery of services. I'm pleased to share that at this early moment, we are seeing increases in summer and fall 2020 enrollment. I will be very honest with you, I don't think we can generalize from that an expectation that enrollment will be up, but we want to leave no stones unturned in helping students remain enrolled and in helping new students enroll by removing obstacles. I think, though, we have to be prepared for the possibility of enrollment decline, which also affects our finances, but we're doing all the right things to try to navigate what is really beyond our control in terms of the, the challenge. I want to take this opportunity to thank Associate Dean Matt Fessler and all of our staff in enrollment services for their exemplary work and dedication. So together, we're really leaving no stones unturned in our efforts to reach out to and support our students. As I shared with our trustees on Tuesday, alumni representative to the Board of Trustees, Abdairahim Salih, was recently named a 2020 recipient of the nationally prestigious Goldwater Scholarship, which is considered the premier award in mathematics, science, and engineering nationwide. It's named in honor of the late Senator Barry Goldwater. It's presented to full-time sophomores and juniors who show exceptional promise of becoming the nation's next generation of leaders. I'm reading from their guidelines. Next generation of leaders in the natural sciences, mathematics, and engineering research. According to the Goldwater Scholarship Guidelines, and I'm quoting, "Recipients demonstrate a passion for research and exhibit creative spark." Abdairahim plans to earn a PhD in computer science and mathematics and wants to work in a world-class academic research lab. He was one of three hundred ninety-six students chosen for the scholarship from nearly five thousand applicants nationwide. And I would add, the vast majority of Goldwater Scholars are students enrolled in four-year colleges and universities. Rahim is only the second New Jersey community college student to become a Goldwater Scholar since the program's inception in nineteen eighty-six. And I think the first was, awarded a scholarship back in the early nineties from Bergen County College. So this is a big deal, but as noteworthy this accomplishment is, and I did, I did express this at our trustee meeting, I, I would suggest that its significance is exceeded by a recent act of kindness that exemplifies how so many of our HCCC community members are supporting others at this difficult time. Abdairahim's created three-D printed face shields for local healthcare centers inundated with personal protective equipment shortages during the pandemic. He said he was compelled to provide solutions for healthcare workers who face a high risk of infection while treating hospitalized patients. And quoting Rahim, he said, "I wish I were a nurse on the front lines of helping our fellow citizens during this crisis. We all have to come together to fight this enemy." Rahim, I hope you're with us here. Thank you for your kindness and your excellence. You truly inspire us all. On Tuesday, our trustees also acted upon the recommendations of the faculty promotion committee, Executive Vice President and Provost Dr. Eric Friedman and me, for the promotion of two members of our faculty. Through this annual process, faculty members may apply to the promotion committee for promotion to a higher academic rank with commensurate salary. Criteria include teaching effectiveness, contributions to the college, scholarly and professional achievement, and contributions to the community. And I'm pleased to congratulate two members of the faculty who have been promoted from the rank of Assistant Professor to Associate Professor. There's Shanee Caruana, who teaches English as a second language, and Nadia Headley, who teaches biology. In addition to teaching, Professor Caruana is Chair of the All-College Council's Development and Planning Committee. She's a member of the college's ATD Core Strategy Team, co-editor of the HCCC Diversity Magazine in our ESL Division, and she's a member of the General Education Committee. She earned a master's degree in teaching English as a second language from the New School in New York, and earlier in her career, she studied and taught in Italy and Turkey. And Professor Headley is an HCCC alumna. After, for studies here, she went on to earn a BA in Biology at Rutgers and then completed a PhD in Biomedical Science at the University of Medicine and Dentistry of New Jersey. She also conducted postdoctoral research at Weill Cornell Medical College and Yale University. And Nadia has won numerous awards from the American Heart Association, National Institutes of Health, and Phi Beta Kappa, among others, and she's published widely in prestigious journals. Congratulations, Professors Caruana and Headley. We are so happy for you and proud of you and proud to have you in our community. And speaking about pride and congratulations, I also want to congratulate our valued colleague, Professor Angela Pack, who just defended her dissertation. She was awarded a PhD in Teacher Education and Teacher Development by Moncler State University. Congratulations, Dr. Pack. We're so happy for you and proud to have you in our HCCC family. As circumstances continue to change around us, we're working hard to keep our HCCC community members connected remotely. We salute many faculty, staff, and students who are offering professional development programs to help our employees continue to grow and remain informed. And in addition, through the leadership of Vice President Anna Kropitsky, we're all enjoying the nearly daily Hudson employee spotlight, in which community members who are nominated by their colleagues are recognized on our website for their contribution towards students and our college's mission and values. We congratulate and thank all who have been recognized to date with many more to come. These include Jing Yang, Director of Library Technology; Patricia Clay, Chief Information Officer; Joseph Kniglia, Interim Associate Dean of English and ESL; Hardick Sanjavi, Kevin Eng and Willie Shire in I T S; Diana Galvez, Student Development Associate; and Larry Anderson, Part-Time Food Pantry Manager at the North Hudson Campus; Julio Maldonado in Facilities; Lawrence Louie, PC Technician in I T S; and Stephanie Sargent, Administrative Assistant in Human Resources. Congratulations, colleagues, and thanks for your excellence and your dedication to our students and our college. I also want to thank all members of our coronavirus task force under the phenomenal leadership of Dr. Darrell Jones and Kathleen Smith-Wenning. Task force members continue to meet regularly to review issues, respond to challenges and concerns, and keep community members informed. And I also want to thank essential services personnel who are maintaining a presence on campus and are responding to on-the-ground needs while most of us are working remotely from home. Many, many thanks to Jack Quigley and his team members in Public Safety and Security, and Ilya Ashman and his team and facilities for their conscientious work and support. Recently, we announced plans for our commencement ceremony. We conducted two surveys of our graduating students to determine the best option for a May commencement alternative, and I thank Veronica Gerissimo and others for surveying our students with very little advance notice. As you're aware, we plan to hold commencement on May 21st at Red Bull Arena in Harrison, but of course, that's no longer possible. Recently, we announced plans to hold a commencement ceremony in December, and at this ceremony, we'll honor all 2019-2020 graduates as well as December 2020 graduates. And it, kind of interestingly, we have been talking about the fact that each December, we see a larger number of students graduating. Last year, we had like standing-room-only reception in the banquet room. I believe we have upwards of four hundred and fifty December graduates. So this year, they have the opportunity to be celebrated in a live ceremony with their other fellow graduates. So commencement will be held this year on Thursday, December 10th, beginning at noon at NJ Pack in Newark. Please mark your calendars, and certain information will be forthcoming. We now plan to move our annual ceremony to Red Bull Arena beginning in May 2021. And although this year's ceremony is postponed, we also want to celebrate our graduating, graduating students' successes virtually this spring. This will include celebration packages mailed to graduating students' homes, virtual events including honor society inductions, social media recognitions highlighting the accomplishments of our graduates, and more. And students will receive an email with more details in the coming weeks. And finally, we're delighted to let you know that our new student center is now completed and fully furnished. It'll be waiting for our students and all of us when we're back together, and it will certainly be a very special moment when we can finally hold our grand opening celebration of this milestone new facility. Folks, we're all in this together. We're getting through the current challenges together with a view to how we can emerge as an even stronger college going forward and a view that focuses squarely on student success. We're truly an extended family. Thank you all so much from the bottom of my heart for what you're doing. And I'm going to end there, and now we move into the technologically different opportunity for questions, comments, and answers where appropriate. If you'd like to speak, please press 1-0, and it's my understanding that you'll be able to speak in the order of your entry into the conversation. Hardick will facilitate, and I welcome your, your comments.
This conference is now in question and answer mode. To alert the speaker that you have a question, press 1, then 0.
Not just a question, but a comment, or celebratory comments, anything you'd like to share. Always takes a brave person to break the ice. Hardick, how many, how many folks do we have on the line?
The total of participants are one hundred and forty-four.
Wow. Fantastic.
Hi, Chris and all. I want to thank you. This is Michael Felice.
Hey, Michael.
Representing, hi, representing Professional Association. I want to thank you for doing this. It's so good that we are sort of getting ourselves up and running and kind of moving towards post-crisis mode. I think all of us feel that the dust is settling a little bit and being able to get a better grip on, on things. I just want to do a couple of things. I, I want to also, as a Professional Association president, also thank our members who have been promoted and received tenure and their PhDs. So to Shanane Caruana, Nadia Headley, for the tenure members now, our new members Lauren Drew, Sirhan Abdullah, and Courtney Payne, and also Angela Pack, and her dissertation now is Dr. Pack. I just want to say, they're all major contributors to our student success, our college, and even into their fields of research, and they're all very strong and highly valued members. So congratulations to them, and it's really nice to have our members here getting promoted and becoming fully tenured faculty. So I, I just have a couple of one or two small points. I think some of us have heard different messages coming out here and there. I mean, that's to be expected, and I know under the kind of mad scramble we've all had to try to make sense of things, that, that I think would be totally anticipated. I, I would just want to say that I think what's very important for faculty is that they all receive the same messages from their deans and that we're all on the same page. I know Eric and Darrell have addressed this. I, I just wanted to sort of get it out there so that we're kind of not getting kind of, you know, mixed ideas. You know, I, I had heard the other day that summer two was going to be online, but I, you're saying that we're not sure yet. Is that correct?
We haven't yet pulled the trigger on that. You know, and I'm open to thoughts. If you feel it's time to, we can. You know, there's been so much national discourse about getting back in business, and I honestly don't expect we'll be able to do summer two on the ground, but we were trying to wait it out as long as we could.
Uh huh, uh huh. Yeah, understandable. Just, just looking for clarity on that. I relayed this to Eric and Darrell in an email yesterday or last night. After speaking to a number of our faculty, I, I think the question has been for those faculty who are now teaching online, who are not expected to, but have converted their classes to online classes rather than the fully online classes. I, I think some of those faculty would be comfortable moving into fully online shells and others might not, and we're hoping that those faculty will have the choice of whether they want to continue using the converted forms that they've made, or if they're comfortable, there is some advantage for moving into, you know, those that are already fully online, but that their deans give them the choice of that.
Okay. Could I ask Darrell or Eric if you'd like to comment on that?
Sure, this is Eric. Can you hear me?
Yes, Eric.
Okay, good. I didn't have to push any numbers. Yeah, so I, I saw your email late yesterday and had planned on, you know, crafting a response to it today. As we've spoken over the last week or two, you know, there's, there's a number of intricacies to the difference between a fully online class that has an ON course code and the process that, that such a class has gone through, and then classes of various forms and shapes that are using online modalities, and some instructors, as you say, are getting more comfortable with it and are looking to go the next step with it. What's really important in the conversation, and, you know, I am going to communicate back with you today, is that students are expecting different things when they register. So a big part of my response is going to be around, you know, what did we put up for, for summer session online one, summer session, summer one, for example? You know, were the students that have registered into that course expecting a fully ON-coded course when, when they registered for that course? So there's a lot for me to say about this that I don't think I, I can take up all this time on the town hall, and it was very late last night when I saw that message come in, and I thought, yeah. And you know, I want to just acknowledge to everybody on this call across the college community. First of all, I hope everybody's staying well and everybody is doing well, but I want to acknowledge Michael's Herculean efforts to work sometimes into the deep hours of the night to bring communications that Darrell and I are crafting. Michael reviews them, he brings them to his leadership team, he brings them to his membership, he responds late into the night. You know, he's really committed on behalf of the college and on behalf of his membership and his division, and it's such a real pleasure, really. I'm honored to work with him because he is really doing every single thing that he can to respond to his members' concerns as well as, you know, what the student needs are. So, Michael, we're going to communicate today on this. It's really, really important, and I appreciate that you're bringing this up.
Oh geez, thank you, Eric. That's really very kind of you and generous. Just one, I'll make one last closing statement, and I had planned to make the statement before Eric made it, which is I want all my colleagues to know also that the administration has been incredibly responsive for us. I would say even in anticipating some of our own concerns before we even brought them up to administration, and that is really highly valued. I mean, I think we're moving into such a new area and direction of our college. I even really believe that we're maybe acting as a kind of a model college for others to look at. Many in the NJEA are asking questions about how our union and the administration have worked on so many things together, and it makes me very proud to be working with everybody and in this kind of way that we have developed over the last two years. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Michael, thank you so much. And I really want to thank the leaders, the officers of all four of our unions and also the All College Council. Everybody's been working so well together.
All right. Hey, Weaver, I'm Victor. Today, I was just concentrating on college. Because you said-
I'm sorry, Victor, I'm sorry, Victor, I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I didn't catch it.
Yeah.
I think I know you. I know you from Pizza with the President.
Ah, yeah, that's me. Because you stated that you're going to be doing online instruction until summer one, are you hopeful that we come back by summer two, the fall 2020 term, and the semester beyond when it's safe for us to do so as we get to be informed by federal, local, and state officials regarding this ongoing pandemic?
Oh, I, yeah, personally, I'm absolutely hopeful. I think I probably speak for everyone when I say, you know, we want to be back on the ground. We want to be seeing and working with one another with our students as soon as we possibly can. At the same time, now speaking for myself, I don't want to, I'm hoping as a society, we don't rush that in a way that will exacerbate and bring back, you know, more suffering. I mean, we just have to be, we have to do it when it's safe and healthy. I think listening to some of our leaders, certainly Governor Murphy, Governor Cuomo, and they are working now collaboratively with Governor Wolf in Pennsylvania and the Governor of Connecticut and Delaware as well.
Yeah.
They, they, you know, they're, we want to follow their guidance and the guidance of the healthcare community. So it's really not a question of when I or we want to come back, but when we know it's safe to come back.
As long as the, as long as the economy is reopened for like everybody in the tri-state area, as well as my second home of Illinois and everywhere around the world in the United States.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the economic concerns are phenomenal. I think, you know, thinking forward to when we start to approach more stability, the mission of our community colleges is going to be front and center in terms of what we can contribute to national economic recovery by way of retraining and educating the workforce for new opportunities that are servicing and for those that are no longer going to be there.
Right. And as you said before, because you said the student center is finally finished and refurbished, do you got, when we come back and it's safe for us to do so, are you going to like open in the fall or like sometime next year?
Well, it's ready to walk into as soon as we're back on campus. So as soon as we're back, I'm anticipating that the staff will move in, our student leaders will move in, and we will finally hold our grand opening celebration. I've got to tell you, that's been scheduled and pushed back numerous times, but once we're back on the ground, there will be no delay in using and benefiting from that great facility.
Right. And also, do you also have like a target date on when you guys want to come back, or do you have, or you guys continue being informed by officials regarding the ongoing pandemic?
Yeah, that's not our decision. We have to follow the guidelines of our community leaders and healthcare agencies.
Okay.
And they don't, you know, there hasn't been a decision made about that. I do think based on what we're seeing, there's, we're going to start to see a very gradual return to business, but it's probably going to be very gradual, and it appears that we will be probably slowest to return to fully normal circumstances in the nation since we're at the epicenter of the pandemic.
Yeah, I know for a fact that like only like until a vaccine comes in, I know it'll take like twelve to eighteen months, and if it happens, and it'll be like, and these stuffs get worse, and then we might not be able to come back until like a year, because I'm going to suck it till like I guess you could say leave to Chicago, but I can't clear when, as long as COVID goes away, or I guess, because I know like many of us are like at risk of our lives, but I know for a fact we should keep active social distancing, washing our hands frequently, being on a safe personal hygiene, and only going out only for essential needs like groceries for and some stuff. But for a fact that I can, I guess you could say, because I know we want to come back like better sooner than ever, as long as no situation like this ever happens again, and we just continue being on a safe hygiene and safe ship as usual. I mean, only for say like many of us, we have to stay home as long as we're not spreading like germs to everyone in like the college.
Yeah.
I know for a fact you guys are hopeful that you can hold commencement at NJ PAC December and May 2021 for Red Bull Arena, because I know I told you a lot before, now I'm starting to leave, I should be see, at once I complete everything, so I could be to Chicago, you can wish me all the best, as well as other things down the road.
Well, very good. You stay safe and healthy, and I look forward to seeing you at Pizza with President, hopefully sooner than later. Thanks, Victor.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you much.
Others?
Hello, Dr. Weaver. Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Hi. Jose Lo, Representative to the Administrator Association.
Yes. Monsieur.
So, thank you. So my, just a comment, and thanking you and your administration for providing this type of avenue for our members and everybody else on campus to express our concerns and our thoughts, and to hear your voice and to keep this normal thing continuing. So once again, it's just a comment. Thank you very much on behalf of all my members in my union.
Thank you, Jose, and thanks for everything you're doing.
It's Katie Sweeting. How are you?
Good. How are you, Katie?
I'm doing well. I just want to thank you for your leadership. You have a wonderful habit of thanking everybody and commending people for everything they've done, but I would say without a good leader, people would not be giving and doing as much as they are and going above and beyond. So you are the model, and I just really appreciate your leadership.
Thank you so much. Katie, so do you have any sense of when your full break will now start?
I have none whatsoever. They just, the lockdown in India is continuing for another three weeks, so this is, I'm in the same bucket with everybody else, which is wait and see.
You bet. Well, thank you for your kind remarks and thanks for everything that you do, and yeah, it'll be worth waiting for.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Memphis. I'm a student of the senior in the radiology program, and it's just a comment. I would like to take a thank you, a big thank you to you and all the members of the administration that have been doing a great job to help the students, and especially a big, big, big thank you to Ms. Schatchel, the program director, as well as Mrs. Gru, which is the other program professor, and Mr. Gibson, Kathy, who's, all three of them have been amazingly open to all the questions that we as students have, seniors and juniors of our radiology program. And thank you just, we want just to comment just a big thank you to you and all the people that is working to make Hudson a extremely excellent place to go to study.
Thank you so much, and please stay safe and healthy, and greatly appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Professor Imam from the chemi division. How are you doing, sir?
Good.
I really, on the one hand, we do appreciate the environment which has been created by the faculty, by the administration, and particularly the Professional Association and all others. It was really a very, very nice display, but I have two requests, and request number one is that some of the students in particularly my introductory computer science courses, when they download the data from the college website, they do not get the access DB, that is access database, which is a part of the instruction. So is it possible that we can pack or purchase or from the fund which we have received, that will be good use and good help to the students?
Yes. So may I ask Eric or is there anyone on the cabinet that can speak in more detail to this?
Hi, this is Lisa Docherty. Students, when they join HCCC, they get free access to Microsoft 365, so I believe access database should be part of that package. They can get instructions on how to download that on the new, on the student portal under information technology.
Lisa, in the interest of saving time, yes, I know, and I have seen that, but unfortunately, when they download also, they don't have the access database. That is why I was telling you. They have everything else, which is a common package from the, if anybody can see that and really confirm that, that will be helpful. That's all I was trying to tell.
Okay. We will definitely, we will definitely work on this, and I'm going to ask for Tricia Clay.
Let's take it as a positive feedback and the help for the student.
Sure.
Wherever we can help them. That is point one, and of course, we are, I think, one proposal which I said, and I don't know whether it will work or it will not, I'm not sure of that, but as a community living together, what I was proposing, and again, if, we all know that our financials are always at a challenging state, but is it possible that one day of our salary is really deducted, or we all have to agree on that first thing first, that we have to look into our finances as well, but that will be my request, that we donate at least one day of the salary to the people who are in need, not students outside the community, the nurses, the firefighters. When I see their picture, when they need that money, I really, I literally cry. So is there any way that we can do, whatever we can do, and is there any contributory part from the college also, say, if an employee is donating a dollar, college also contributes fifty cents or dollar? I don't know if it is feasible or not, but I propose let's do it as a common well-being. Those are the two things to request. Appreciate your time and help, and again, stay safe.
Thank you so much. We will definitely look into both of these. Nicholas Shavvalati, by chance, are you on the line?
I am, Chris.
Any comments about the second item?
Well, the, and I think this is reported, but just everyone's aware, the foundation did make a donation of $25,000 to the Hudson Helps Program to support our students' community. The foundation will also actively fundraising for the food pantry and some other areas of support for our community. I think on the matching dollars for outside the community, I think becomes a little bit more complicated now that we need to sort of look into that more, because our mission and bylaws focus on raising funds to support members of our community, students, staff, faculty, et cetera. We'll look into it.
We'll look into it, and the other thing I would add is, we can be very proud of the fact that so many faculty has given students have donated equipment and needed supplies, PPE, to folks on the front line, and that is continuing as well. But we will, we'll think about this and what's possible. I appreciate you raising them. Others?
Hi, Dr. Weaver. This is Amala from North Carolina.
Hi, Amala. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
I echo everyone else's sentiments about your leadership. I mean, I did reach out to you and let you know, I think it is really humane the way that you've responded, and I really appreciate that. I know that everyone is working really, really hard. I just wanted to recognize a couple of people because I work with them a little more closely. So Natalia and Kyle from Academic Support Services and Anna from HR, we've been working very closely together over the last few weeks, and the teamwork has been phenomenal. The effort has been phenomenal, and everybody's commitment has been amazing, and so I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate them for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amala, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
Can I just kick in with an acknowledgement and recognition that Amala has moved into temporary full-time status from her TFT status, and we're so glad to have her on the permanent team. Thank you.
It's a little challenging because we know we have 145 people or more out there, and we can't see them, but I think we do want to provide enough time to make sure those who want to participate count.
Hi, Dr. Reivers. This is Kyle Woolley, the head tutor for math, science, and business.
Yes, Kyle. How are you?
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank all of our tutors for the quick movement to online tutoring and all the hard work that they're putting in on behalf of our department.
Absolutely.
And for all the students at the college, anyone on the call now, if you have any questions regarding online tutoring, please feel free to reach out to anyone in our department, and we'd be more than willing to assist you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kyle, and all of our tutors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other comments or questions, suggestions, consolations?
Hello, doctor?
Yes.
This is Justin, the, one of the librarian associates from Hudson Community Library.
Yes.
Hi. Now, for the question I want to ask, now during this whole pandemic season that we're having, I know that most of the faculties are using the internet to do their work, you know, based on the quarantine. Now, my question is, what about the part-timers who are usually, you know, they usually come in the morning, afternoons and stuff? And what will happen in the summer and summer one, I mean, well, summer two?
In terms of, I want to make sure I understand the question. What will happen?
In terms of for the part-timers, are they still going to be coming in or?
You know, again, unfortunately, there's just a number of question marks. So, our, our hope is that we will be on the ground sometime this summer and that would include part-time and full-time staff. If we're not, our hope is that we can continue to keep all of our employees, you know, working and supporting students and services to the best of their ability. Those are our goals.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, as soon as we have more information, we will be sharing that with everyone. But, you know, even our part-time folks are working remotely and are continuing to be on the payroll.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Tajo, the EOS counselor from the EOS program, Dr. Weaver.
Yeah, how are you?
I'm blessed, how are you?
Good.
That's great to hear, I hope you and Garrett are well. I just wanted to pretty much recognize my team, giving it up to Mr. Low. He is an amazing director in our, our team of EOS. We've been working diligently together, you know, meeting daily and it's brought so much normalcy with working at home. And I just want to give a shout out to our team, so thank you so much as well. And thank you to all the associations, professors, also teaching as well. We're very grateful for you also, just, I wanted to just say that.
Aw, thank you so much.
Thank you as well.
Any other questions?
Hello, everyone?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, this is Myrta Sanchez, I hope everyone is safe.
Yeah, how are you Myrta?
And thank you, Dr. Weaver, again for your leadership. I would like to recognize Gary Bensky, Chef Bensky has reinvented himself. We know that two of the most difficult for instruction are nursing and culinary. So, if you all feel inspired, you could go to the YouTube and look for Gary Bensky and you'll be seeing videos that we have been doing at home with recipes. So, thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Um, Myrta, thank you, Gary, thank you. And I'm going to tell you something, I've watched them. And I want to come to your house for dinner when we're back on the ground.
Anytime when we're-
His pot roast and his meatloaf are, you know, are, they look spectacular.
Thank you, more to come.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, hello, Dr. Ree.
Yes.
Hi, I'm a part-time federal work study from the gallery, my name is Julian.
Hi.
Hi. My question is, my major is criminal justice. There's a, I contacted a Twitter person and they couldn't help me out. My major is criminal justice and they should, like, add a, like, a Twitter, like, will criminal justice help for a person to help other students who are criminal justice law majors and, like, I was looking for a criminal justice intro help and, okay, I, I should, you guys add, have other majors but except criminal justice. I think that's a great idea to have a criminal justice Twitter.
Okay. Would Daryl or Eric or Lisa, anyone want to comment on this?
Hi, this is Eric. I'm going to-
Hi.
Yes, I'm going to reach out to Dr. Jones, Daryl Jones, after this call and talk about tutorial support related to criminal justice. I'm really appreciative that you're willing in front of one hundred and forty-five people to ask this question and we are going to get the resources allocated to this. This is terrific. So, in order to reach me, my email is efriedman@hccc.edu. So, if you stay on at the end of the call, I can take your information down.
Yes, of course, my name is Julian Otero, my email is joter0812@hacc.edu.
Thank you.
Back one, thank you.
And I hope everyone stays safe during this pandemic.
You bet, you too.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Weaver, this is Heather Conners, tenure track faculty from English, how are you?